January nineteenth meeting of the Middletown City Common Council. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call.
Ram Kassoon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Summers.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Burr is absent. Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of minutes. Why don't we lump them all together unless anyone has an objection to that? Grab a motion. Older woman Summers, seconded by older woman Ram Kassoon. At the November seventeenth, I guess I'd be less vain, December first, December fifteenth, and January fourth minutes. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Correspondence.
Okay, we discussed the correspondence this afternoon, and these will be going to some committees. I received a, from Julissa Sierra, a policy manual, and this is for the Mulberry House Senior Citizen Activity Center Policies and Procedures Manual, and this will go to the Legislative Committee. Received a letter from the Department of Consumer Affairs and Waits and Measures, and they are asking if Middletown would consider entering into a reciprocal electrical licensing agreement with the County of Orange, and that will go to the Legislative Committee. We received a letter from the Department of Public Service. These are all in your mailboxes on a public statement on hearings regarding the proceeding currently before the commission, and this is an Altess, Envy, and Cable Vision filed a joint petition seeking commission approval for Cable Vision to transfer certain telephone and cable systems to Altice. That's received and filed. We received a letter from Agro Culture and Markets, and this is the municipal shelter inspection report for Port Jervis on twelve-ten-two thousand fifteen, and everything passed, and it's all satisfactory, and this is received and filed. That is all for correspondence.
Thank you. For the good of the city, anyone that would like to come forward, please go up to the podium, state your name, and speak, please.
Good evening. My name is Catherine McMenamy. I live at nineteen Willow Place in Middletown, and I am here because I got a notice regarding zoning changes, I do believe, on Chestnut Avenue.
That's correct.
My question is that I've talked to some of our neighbors, and we don't understand...
I truly don't mean to interrupt you, but if you'll see, I don't know, do you have an agenda in front of you?
I do.
All right. Number seven, there's going to actually be a public hearing, and that would be where your comments would be best suited.
Okay.
I don't mean to cut you off, but at the public hearing, I don't know if there's anything else you want to speak on other than that issue.
Not at this time.
Then absolutely, at the public hearing, please do come back up, and I...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
All the men and women of City Council of Middletown. My name is Alyssa Lipkin, and I'm here tonight representing the Promenade Adult Day Center in the Promenade Senior Living on Seventy Fulton Street. And if I can enter your quorum here, I have some flyers to present to you that represent the program. I believe in the first folder is a booklet of photos of recent events that have taken place, and you can certainly peruse those at your leisure and pass those around while we're going through the packet itself. And as I said, my name is Alyssa Lipkin. I am the Director of the Adult Day Program at Seventy Fulton, and I can always be reached at three-four-one-eighteen-eighty-eight. We're open for business Monday through Friday, eight to four, and we provide a very warm and caring environment for the seniors, both here in Middletown and beyond. We provide what I call the three E's: enrichment, engagement, and enlightenment. We enrich many seniors who are still living at home by providing them a social model program where they can interact and establish new as well as former relationships with their peers. Engagement, both on a mental and physical capacity, which for many, as we begin to age, I feel is essential. That's one of the reasons why we have day programs. And lastly, enlightenment through cultural and spiritual activities as well. There are intergenerational programs that we do with the Middletown Pre-K Day Nursery, which is right up the street from us, and as well, other cultural events. We've just had a Korean group from the International Leadership Training Program that's housed up in Ellenville. Come and join us last week as well as this week, and that was a really special program for everyone who was involved there. Our program is run, as I said, eight to four, and we've got a wonderful staff that joins me in caring for these seniors who are transported to and from the program on a daily basis so they're able to live still independently as long as possible in their home while coming to us during the day, which is certainly a blessing to their caregivers, whether it be a family member or a neighbor or another relative. It's very beneficial because it allows them peace of mind, it allows them to continue working, and it allows these seniors a safe place to be while their caregivers are at work, and it allows respite care as well, which is still important for anyone who is caring for an elderly loved one. And I'm also certified in dementia care through the Alzheimer's Association, and we do have a few clients who are either early or moderate-stage dementia or Alzheimer's, and we are very capable of taking care of this population of people as well. And it's nice to be able to provide this type of service and these resources to the seniors that are in your community. And our doors are open. You're more than welcome to stop by and come check us out any time during the week that you have available. And again, you can contact me at three-four-one-one-eight-eight-eight if you have any other questions about the program, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor Winter, Lake Avenue. I was here during the recycling committee. I'd like to comment a little bit on it, on the schedules. It's not really a serious inconvenience. I'm a big fan of the recycling program, by the way, but it's not really a serious inconvenience to buy another container and put it around the corner and then put it out when the pickup is scheduled. And after Christmas, I had two full bins and a large garbage can, all recyclables to go out, but I hung on to them until they were scheduled, and I think that's a minimal inconvenience. Those bins and garbage cans last for many years, they're quite durable, and it's a minimal cost to the homeowner. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for recycling. Anyone else like to address the council? Remarks of department heads. Chris, Recreation Department. I saw today, I received the calendar, very nice.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Just a couple of quick things here this evening. One, I want to thank everybody for the support with the problem we're having, the issue with the parking lot at Academy Avenue with snow removal and parking for staff, and the neighbors have been pretty cooperative with a letter that went out, and I do appreciate everybody's support from the police department to corporate council to yourselves, so thank you very much. All of our winter programs are up and running. They started the first week in January, and now that they're up and running, all of our spring registration has begun. So, registration is now out. We've had a lot of people asking about volleyball, our spring break program, which is the week that the kids have off, spring soccer, and cheerleading. And we are, believe it or not, starting to get ready for summer and getting the summer brochure together and planning more special activities, so that's also on the way. You have a couple resolutions in front of you tonight with us. One is a Nets trip. We have the opportunity to take some families down to a Nets game. Got tickets really cheap, and I thank you for supporting that. The money that will go out will come back with the ticket sales, so it's not costing the city a dime. It's just a program that families can take advantage of. You'll also see through Middletown Cares, they have the Kaka trip coming up where they go to Washington. That is mandatory with a grant. It is all paid through grant funds. Again, it doesn't cost city taxpayers anything, and they come back with a lot of information to collaborate with other coalitions around the United States, not just locally. So it's very informative, and it will help us sustain programs when that grant money runs out. So that's an important trip as well. Speaking about Middletown Cares, I know starting tomorrow night on Channel twenty, we are going to be having a program running. There was a program, Middletown Cares meets here the second Thursday of every month at six o'clock, and the new program coordinator, Kelly Ocasio, she has every other month a guest speaker coming in on issues parents would like to hear about. And Eileen France from the Paramount, that we all know and love running our camera and spends a lot of hours out here, so I really want to give her a shout-out for her time and her expertise. She'll be running what's called the vape culture and synthetic drugs, and it's really education for the parents on what's out there that your kids can and might get involved with, and you don't even know it. And the presentation was really good here. It was here last Thursday night, and we'll be playing that on Channel twenty to give our parents as much information as possible about this vape, the vaping culture that our young people are doing and what it can do to them and what else is going into those pipes and the synthetic drugs that are out there that are so dangerous. And lastly, as Alderman Massey said, our two thousand fifteen hour report was completed by our staff, and I did put them in your mailboxes. We had a very successful year, and I got to really thank all of you and the department heads and the staff of the other departments for all the help we got in two thousand fifteen. It was greatly, greatly appreciated, and we're looking to have a wonderful two thousand sixteen. We've got a great team over there, and the residents are really coming forward to getting involved, and it's a good place to be. Middletown's a good place to be.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Alderman Kleiner?
Chris, I just wanted to mention the two student members of the Recreation Commission who came to the Rec Committee meeting, and, you know, it was great having them there, and I hope they continue.
Yes, they came as guests to the first meeting. They're supposed to be forwarding a letter of interest to the mayor if they would like to be part of the commission. One gentleman was very enthusiastic, the other young lady a little shy, but she definitely had some things to share when the meeting was over. So I think she'll get comfortable, and we're definitely empowering youth, getting them involved, and I think they have a lot to offer. So thank you for reminding me of that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks, Chris, appreciate it. Corporation Council?
I'd like to ask for any questions.
Any questions from Mr. Gerton? Thank you. DPW Commissioner, Mr. Twill.
Good evening, all. Good evening, Acting Mayor, Acting Council President, Mr. Massey. Been doing a great job so far, very proud of you. I'm gonna start off with the good news. Last year, the mayor probably will be elaborating on this one and the state of the city, but DPW, the wastewater treatment plant, has generated in revenue four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars from septic haulers, again, from outside the city, and that's a huge income for us. That's unheard of, and we're very proud of the operation and the men who are doing it for us at the wastewater treatment plant, and we're striving to generate much more revenue in the future. But this is what we promised you about ten years ago, the mayor and I, and we have delivered four hundred and, almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars revenue for septic, from septic haulers from outside the city. That money goes into fixing our infrastructure, into keeping our sewer rates the way they are, into paying the debt. It's a great help for us, and we're very happy to be able to generate this revenue. I'm very proud of it. Another thing, today, we had a meeting with Orange County Executive Committee for the Orange County Transportation Council, and there was a major vote in there that the mayor and I have been pushing for, for a number of years, for Heritage Trail, for Phase Two of the Heritage Trail, which is from Hartley Road all the way to the Switch and/or East Main Street, and it appropriated about exactly six point seven million dollars in funding in there to fund that Phase Two of the project. And what's interesting about this is the funding has to start, has to be initiated before October two thousand sixteen, which means all the design is going to be accepted by the DOT. The project will be put out for bid, and construction will have to be awarded before the October two thousand sixteen, the way I understand it. And that's been a long, long way. If you remember, we've been fighting for this for about fifteen years, the Heritage Trail. The mayor is not here, but he's been very influential in leading the way, and I was representing him throughout the process with the Orange County Transportation Council Technical Committee. City is not the lead agency, so the county, Orange County Planning Department was the lead agency, then they switched it over to Orange County Planning Department to become the lead agency, so it's not even the city is the lead agency. I'm sorry. Parks, Parks, I'm sorry. Parks Department, thank you, Alderman Kleiner. Parks Department, and this Commissioner Rose right now, he's really taking personal interest in this project, and just he's keeping, he keeps pushing it and pushing it, and we thank him for his effort, and we're very happy that this project finally, it appears is going to see the daylight and is going to materialize, and it's gonna have a great impact on the city of Middletown. Another thing, the streetlights, please, that I see many of them are out when I'm driving, please, in the neighborhood, if you see any streetlight that is out, call it in. You can report it directly to Orange and Rockland on their website, or you can call us with the phone number, rough location, and we'll be happy to report it at DPW, that is. They'll be happy to report it for you, but let's get the streets lit up, we're paying for it anyway. Another thing is we have this Friday night and Saturday, we had the major, could be a major storm, they're not sure yet about the models, which way is gonna go. Please help us out by keeping your cars off the road, minimize any traffic or parking in the streets so that our men can make sure that the roads are safe for you to drive in. So just, please stay out of the way of the plows and keep your cars off the road if it comes to be a real major storm, and we thank you very much. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Commissioner Twill. Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. John?
Our department had just started issuing the new electrical licenses and also the plumber's license for two thousand sixteen, so if anyone in the city of Middletown is looking for a licensed plumber and a licensed electrician, they are, the lists are now on the website. And speaking of the website, I have the final numbers from two thousand fifteen, and there were a hundred and forty-five thousand sessions on our website from January first to December thirty-first, and there were ninety-five thousand three hundred and fifty-five users on our website. And when they came to our website, they viewed three hundred and sixty-five thousand pages on our website, and it's very good, and everybody is very happy with the website, and they've been using it, and I'm hoping to maybe look at updating it probably next year, because it's been like five, six years since it's been done, so it probably needs some, and I'll be looking for any input on anything if we need to do any changes for that. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John? All right, now, I'm just gonna put my civil service hat on just for a second, only because Jacob brought up something, and we in the city of Middletown have a, an examination to give this Saturday. I know throughout the county, certainly the city of Newburgh, city of Piquip, excuse me, city of Port Jervis, the county of Orange, and the state all have tests scheduled, and there is a policy if the weather is inclement. And based on what Commissioner Twill said, let me at least tell you what the state's rules are regarding that examination or examinations whenever there's bad weather, and it's simply put this way, unless the county or city where the exam is to be held has declared a snow or weather-related emergency, and the public has been advised to stay off the roads, the exam is to be conducted as scheduled, it is, if it is all practical to do so. So unless there's a state of emergency and the mayor proclaims that, the exams will be given, whether it's here, if you're scheduled to be here, if you're scheduled to be any one of the other sites. And we are putting that on our website just to let people know. I just wanted, I don't think it probably affects anyone in this room, but certainly on TV, or if they know if someone is scheduled to take an exam somewhere else, those are, that's the state regulation, I just want you to know that. All right, public hearing.
Okay, we have a public hearing tonight on a proposed amendment on the zoning code to rezone ten, twelve, and fourteen Chestnut Avenue from an OR two two-family owner-occupied residential districts to a C-one neighborhood business districts. And I'll read the notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, on or nearest to eight p.m. as possible, Common Council Chambers, second floor, sixteen James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed amendment to the zoning code to rezone ten, twelve, and fourteen Chestnut Avenue, Section fifty-three, Block four, lots two-point-eleven, two-point-twelve, and two-point-thirteen, from an OR two, which is a two-family owner-occupied residential districts, to a C-one neighborhood business districts. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed amendment, and this was in the Times Herald Record on January eleventh and also January twelfth, and posted on the city website. For the record, the city clerk's department did mail out at your request five hundred feet from these locations, and with that, the G-two-thirty-nine was in effect because we are a certain amount, five hundred foot from the Walk Hill and also way beyond it, so this had to be go to the county with their approval, and I did receive, they had thirty days to reply, and I did receive their reply. The department has received the above referenced zoning change from OR two to C-one for three lots on Chestnut Avenue, and has found no evidence that significant intermunicipal or county-wide impacts would result from its approval. And also, that did go, the letters did go to Walk Hill and also the town way beyond it, and there were no replies from there.
All right, I'll open up the public hearing. The applicant, why don't you come first?
Good evening. My name is Sean O'Connor. I'm an attorney here in Middletown. I represent all three applicants, John de Bovene, Parata Realty, and MBJ LLC, the owners of fourteen, twelve, and ten Chestnut Avenue respectively. John de Bovene actually purchased all three parcels, ten through fourteen Chestnut Avenue in nineteen ninety-four, and created a subdivision that was approved in February of nineteen ninety-six. At the time of purchase of the property and subsequent subdivision of the property, the parcel was originally zoned C-one. In nineteen ninety-six, the city of Middletown changed the master plan, and for reasons that research could not tell anybody, this, these three parcels, or at least that parcel at the time, because it was one parcel, was zoned OR two, which is owner-occupied two-family. Twelve Chestnut Avenue is owned by, is currently owned by Parata Realty and was built prior to the change of the master plan in nineteen ninety-six. Therefore, it's a pre-existing non-conforming two-family. Parata has joined this application simply to conform its use to the C-one zone. John de Bovene, the owner of fourteen Chestnut, having built the property at twelve Chestnut Avenue, to be honest with you, then subsequently sold it to Parata Realty, built another two-family residence on fourteen Chestnut Avenue, unaware of the fact that the property's zone had changed OR two. In an attempt to sell the dwelling to a third party, the city of Middletown was contacted to make sure that there were no municipal code violations, and we then found out that the property was zoned OR two, not C-one, and the building inspector actually issued a letter of condemnation on the property because it was not owner-occupied. So that was really the impotence of making the application tonight. MBJ LLC owns ten Chestnut Avenue and also wanted to join the application, so the zoning change would affect all three parcels. We wouldn't be doing a form of spot zoning change or anything of that nature, and also intends to probably build a two-family residence on ten Chestnut sometime in the future. Now, given the surrounding properties, if you look at the zoning map, it's right there. This block itself, these three parcels are the only parcels zoned OR two in that block. The entire remaining block is zoned C-one, and all the other properties around that are zoned R-one, or UR-three, I believe is also another zone, not too far away from this. But given the use of twelve Chestnut as a two-family, not pre-existing non-conforming, and all the other residential use in the area, it is, we're strictly requesting that the common council permit the change of the zone to either R-two two-family or to C-one, which allows two-family residential in that zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on this matter? Yeah, there you go. And thank you for being patient.
Thank you. Okay. We're not quite getting how this is going to affect us who live in that development. Between having zoning changes there on Chestnut Avenue and having Mr. Mendelbaum's project here and something else here, it's like, is there any place other than to build in Middletown than in Amshire? It's, you know, and we don't quite know what's happening. So, right now, I understand that there are two two-family homes on Chestnut, and whether they're owned, whether they're owner-occupied, whether they're rentals, we don't know. Quite honestly, it's never been any of my business. But at this point, you know, all of this is now becoming our business. So is this a situation where we are going to have yet another two-family home put up and then renters come in? Is this a situation where it says, "Neighborhood Business District"? Is this going to have any indication that there will be businesses in those buildings? I mean, they look like two-family homes to me. Is that the way they're supposed to stay? Is that the project for the future is just a two-family home? Will it be owner-occupied? Will it be rentals? I don't know. Has it already been decided?
No, nothing has been decided. That's why we're having this, but the gentleman who owns them is right there, and he could answer all of your questions, and we have the attorneys here, they can answer your other questions. I believe, in a nutshell, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there are two two-family homes on there right now.
Yes.
When they built them, one of them was in a, it was a C-one at the time. They've always been two-family, unless the change is made by the council, and this is not an endorsement or anything, I'm just trying to explain.
Yes.
If the change is made by the council to go to C-one, and Alex, just if I'm wrong, please, you're the attorney, if it's approved, then they're going to remain two-family homes, and I guess there is a vacant lot that the plan is at some point in the future to build a third two-family home. They will not be, they can be, but they're not necessarily, will they be owner-occupied? So more than likely, they will be rental properties. I believe that's what they have been for all this time, and I, unless one of the applicants are gonna move back in, and I'm assuming they're not, that they will, the two existing ones will remain non-owner-occupied, and the third one probably will be the same. Now, Alex, is there something you want to, he's our attorney, and he's been following this, and he probably can answer your questions much better than I can, but I like the air time.
The only thing I would add is that to avoid any spot zoning, we thought it would be more appropriate to change these three parcels into the C-one, because the C-one, as Mr. O'Connor said, surrounds it on three sides. Now, the only other thing I would mention is that any application now for a two-family or for a small business in a neighborhood business district would have to now go to the planning board. So the one property that Mr. O'Connor mentioned is grandfathered, that's gonna stay as a two-family, it's not gonna change, it's been a non-owner-occupied two-family for years. If the applicant wants to put a two-family into the building that is already constructed, they're gonna have to get planning board permission to do that, and the neighbors will be notified and be able to be heard. Whatever's gonna be done with that vacant property will be governed by what's allowed in the C-one zone, which is small businesses and two-family homes, all with planning board permission. The planning board would have to weigh in.
Wait, wait, let me take care of the public first.
Or did you put up the other two buildings, or built 12 and built 14?
Building 12.
Working as new.
The vacant, I don't know.
As MBJ is looking to put up a two-family.
All right, we're not going to, I can't have the conversation, not that I have a problem, it's just that it's not going to be recorded and everything, and that's the important part of this.
Okay.
You have any other question? No, please. I'm not moving you along, I'm...
No, 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 that's...I honestly don't know where to go from here. I honestly don't know. It's like a state of confusion, because we have two two-family homes there. Are they proposing the third?
Please.
You got to speak in the mic.
Else we're not going to...
We have two two-family homes there. Is this whole situation regarding the building of a possible third two-family home?
Yes, I think that's absolutely...
And that's what it comes down to.
If the council decides to change it to a C1, the applicant would have to go to the planning board and get planning board approval. Not for the one that's been grandfathered, but assuming, and I'm just, as assumption, assuming it's passed, and we have a C1, the second two-family house that's there right now, they're going to have to come to the planning board. If in the future, that third parcel is going to be built upon as a two-family, they would then have to come back to the planning board again. So if the change is made, I would, and it's an assumption, but I think a pretty good assumption, that you're going to have three two-family houses there. You've got two already, and the other one would obviously make number three.
Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone from, let me go to public before.
Just to let her know, to understand that even when it goes to the planning board, that once it's in the planning board, you'll also be notified as a neighbor to provide input at that level as well.
Oh, I see.
So you do have another opportunity, if they make a proposal to the planning board, to come in and speak on it, because you'll be notified since you're in range.
Thank you.
So just...
Anyone else from the public? Anyone from the council? Alderman Kleiner?
I just wanted to clarify to begin with that the original application was for R2, to be non-owner-occupied two-family. And Alex looked, and if you can see on the map, the colors around it, there's this one little strip that's OR2. Everything around it is C1, and everything around that is R1. So it's spot zoning as it is. So to go to R2 would have continued the spot zoning. So Alex's suggestion was to just make it C1 to conform with what is around it. And that allows it to be a two-family home with planning board approval. So it brings in that you have the planning board looking at it, listening to the neighbors, and making sure what's proposed is appropriate for the neighborhood. It's very unlikely to be anything commercial or any business, even though that would be allowed.
Anyone else?
Okay.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Petitions and complaints?
Nothing this evening.
Remarks of, it doesn't say acting mayor, so, not me. Remarks of the Alderman, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Summers.
The Legislative Committee met this evening to discuss amending the zoning code for the taking in of borders in residential dwellings. The resolution will be on the common council agenda in the future. John, can I schedule a legislative committee meeting?
Yes, we have February 16th or February 2nd?
Um...
The next meeting is February 2nd, and 6:30 or 7 o'clock is open. 7:30 is the CDA meeting.
7 o'clock on the 2nd.
You want it 7:15 or 7 o'clock?
Well, 7:15. Yep. Concerning the fourth ward meetings, Jude and I heard your feedback about the combined meetings with the second ward. In an effort to increase participation, we are moving to quarterly meetings on Saturday mornings. We are checking our calendars, and will announce the dates and times at the next council meeting. We thank you in advance for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jean-François?
Yes, good evening. The public press committee met this evening. We discussed parking regulation for the Michael G. Perkins Community Center. A resolution will be forthcoming at our next meeting. I just want to remind everyone, especially in the fourth ward, when we have a holiday that falls on Monday, please do not take out the trash on Sunday, I mean, Sunday night for Monday morning pickup, because the pickup won't be till Tuesday morning. Because I drove around this weekend on Sunday, it was garbage all over the city of Middletown. Please keep our city clean. Refer to our website for the schedule. Please call me if you need a copy of the schedule. You could come to City Hall, you could call City Hall. We'd be more than welcome to send you a copy of the schedule. But please do not take out the trash the day before the holiday. Actually, we had a holiday on Monday. Coffee should have been taken out Tuesday, Monday night, not Sunday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Yes, Sunday, the Greater Middletown Interfaith Council sponsored the Martin Luther King Celebration at St. Paul's Church, and I thought it was very nice. I want to thank them for that. This Sunday and yesterday, the Salvation Army has stepped up and filled in those hours when there's no place else to go for people who don't have any place else to stay warm. And we're hoping that's going to continue so that we don't have people when it's, we get the zero-degree wind chill, who, on days when the library's closed, or if we have a snowstorm, we're going to try and have a place for people to go. The promenade, I don't know if you planned it that way, but since your phone number is 1888, you know that is Middletown's incorporation year, so that works very nice and be easy for me to remember. And the second ward, I believe, Kevin, we're going to continue to do them, because so many, when we did them on the first Monday, they get canceled by holidays or by night out and other things. So we're going to continue to have the second ward meetings at 7 o'clock on the second Monday of the month, and everybody's welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kleiner. Alderman Witt?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Witt. Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. The Heritage Trail, we're getting toward the goal line. Thanks to all who have pushed it there. We'll see if we can make a goal before the future goes too much further along. I did have the opportunity, along the Leatherstone City Hall, to attend the open house at the sick community center on Genong. I've driven past that building probably thousands of times, and it was a good opportunity to be inside and to meet those people. Dr. Singh was the featured speaker. For better or worse, I think the theme of his remarks was a kind of a combination of perception and persecution, but that was part of the message of the day. Both the mayor and the common council president represented us well, in my opinion, and I think they articulated our understanding and empathy for that community. I guess the world would be a better place if we could judge each other based upon behavior and not our physical appearances, but it's a work in progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Johnson. Alderwoman Ramkassun?
Thank you. In case we do actually receive significant snowfall, or any at all really, over the weekend, in addition to Jacob's remarks about parking in the street, I just wanted to remind everyone as well that if you do live near a fire hydrant, that you take the extra time to shovel it out. It does mean valuable time for the fire department. So as Alderman Kleiner likes to say, the house you save might just be your own. With the absence of our fire chiefs tonight, I just wanted to take a minute and hit some highlights from their year-end report. It was actually, it's just interesting facts for people to know. They responded to 1,018 total alarms. Of that, that represented 80 structure fires, 18 second alarms, two third alarm fires. They had 81 mutual aid calls. There were three storm standby units. And I think it's important to keep in mind how valuable these people are to our community, and how fortunate we are to have the best of both worlds here in Middletown. Our paid firefighters ensure rapid response. Our robust volunteer department saves our taxpayers millions. To speak to the volunteers, the report also included information about their training, and there were 28 scheduled drills, approximately four hours in length, with approximately 50 in attendance at each drill. And that comes to about 5,600 hours of combined training for our volunteers. And that does not include the time they put in at calls. So I think it's a good time to just say thank you. If you know a volunteer, say thank you. They do commit a large part of their lives to the community for nothing but the knowledge that they're helping. So thank you to them, and that's all I have this evening. Stay safe and warm this week.
Thank you. Unfinished business?
Nothing this evening.
New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderwoman Ramkassun, to establish standard workdays for elected and appointed officials, and report the day's work to the New York State and local employees' retirement system based on the timekeeping system records or the record of activities.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderwoman Ramkassun. Any comments? Questions? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Ramkassun, seconded by Alderman Witt, to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with County of Orange for the stop DWI enforcement crackdown for 2015 and 2016.
Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Ramkassun, seconded by Alderman Witt. Any comments? Discussion? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson, to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $2,033.09 within the 2015 Fire Department operating budget to cover year-end repairs to equipment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Summers, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Discussion? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, to authorize Kelly Ocaseo, coordinator of the Middletown Carers Coalition, Nicole DiStefano, and Matthew Covell, both active members of the Middletown Carers Coalition, to travel to the National Leadership Forum in Washington, DC, which this conference is a requirement of the grant.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any comments? Discussion? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Jean-François, to authorize Hollywood Towing, located at 241 Route 211 West, in the town of Walk Hill, to be connected to the City of Middletown sewer system, which the property is currently connected to the City of Middletown water system.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Comments? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderwoman Summers, to authorize the treasurer to increase the count 7321 by $2,981, and return revenues will increase in account 2029 by $2,981 to offer a bus trip to the Middletown families to go see a Brooklyn Nets game, and the recreation department would sell tickets to cover all costs.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderwoman Summers. Discussion? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Summers, seconded by Alderman Jean-François, to authorize the treasurer to transfer $15,000 within the 2015 Fire Department operating budget to cover year-end repairs to equipment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Summers, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Discussion? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderwoman Ramkassun, to authorize the issuance of $644,600 of serial bonds to pay planning, engineering, and design costs in connection with capital projects for the city.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderwoman Ramkassun. Any comments? You want me to, Jerry, I've got it.
Yes, fine.
Alderman Kleiner brought up a very good point, and we looked up, we don't want, I know that there'll be some questions on $644,600, and at the board of estimate, it broke down, so you'll know what the $644,600 came from. It's the West Main Street CBG grant for $140,000, Woolworth Project for $322,000, Sykes Center for $50,000, Mountain Avenue Water Tank for $10,000, City Hall Roof for $22,600, and the courthouse for $100,000. Jerry?
And I just wanted to say that these are projects that have been through the council, and they've already been approved, but the money was borrowed from the general fund in anticipation of doing these bonds. So people understand that. Thank you.
No, thank you. Any other comments? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Ramkassun, seconded by Alderwoman Summers, to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of $10,713.34 within the Corporation Council's 2015 budget for litigation.
Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Ramkassun, and seconded by Alderwoman Summers. Discussion? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Summers, seconded by Alderman Jean-François, to authorize the treasurer to transfer $52,657.15 from the general fund balance to the Corporation Council's 2015 budget to cover litigation.
Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Summers, seconded by Alderman Jean-François. Discussion? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Witt, to amend Resolution 263-15 on August 18, 2015, to classify the action secret as unlisted action for the construction of two water tanks, and hereby assume lead agency for the secret review of the action as per the full environmental assessment form for this project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Witt. Discussion? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderwoman Summers, to award the bid for the transfer station structure to Adden North Structures LLC in the amount of $104,640.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderwoman Summers. Discussion? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Local laws?
That is all for new business.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Local laws?
Nothing this evening.
I'm going a little quick. Audit, please, Alderwoman Ramkassun.
Mr. President, I moved the accounts be audited. The claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Seconded by Alderman Johnson. Discussion? Roll.
Ramkassun?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean-François?
Aye.
Summers?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
And thank everyone for being here. Have a good evening, and we are adjourned.